This event is hosted by several nonpartisan groups of the area, including the League of Women Voters, the NAACP of Lakeland, Polk County Voters League, and the Alpha Kappa Alpha Omicron Kappa Omega Chapter. And I think I got that right. Secretary of the League of Women Voters here in Polk County. Tonight's event will be recorded by Lakeland Now. And any recordings of this that might be sought later, please follow the following rules. If you want to see this recording and use it, contact the sponsoring organizations. See if it's okay. And then if you use it, please use it in its entirety. What we're asking is that you don't just take a little clip here or there. This should not be about sound bites. This should be about soundly learning about our candidates. We are very grateful to the New Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church for allowing us to use this community room. We thank them for their generosity. And because we are here in a church, I would now like to invite Dr. Larry Rankin to step to the microphone to say a prayer to begin tonight's forum. Let us pause for a moment of silence as you address your own relationship with the divine and the eternal. Oh God Creator, there are so many issues that face us in our world and our nation. And here in Polk County, we sometimes are overwhelmed by our divisions, by anger, and by even hate. But we know, oh Lord, that you are greater than this and you are the one who brings us love and hope and that you expect all of us to follow hope because without hope, there's only fear. We thank you for this gathering as we learn about those servants who have chosen to serve in the Polk County School Board. Regardless of the results, we acknowledge them, we appreciate them for their efforts and their civic duty. Be with those today. We as listeners and learners to be open and receptive to what these individuals are about to say and to share. And therefore, we turn all of this to you, who is eternal and holds us together and focuses towards a bright future. Amen. As you know, the Polk County School Board consists of seven different members. All seven board members are elected in countywide, nonpartisan elections. But once elected, they represent the entire district. Also, as you know, decisions made by the members of the school board are critically important for the well-being and the education of the students of Polk County schools. Before I introduce the six candidates tonight, let me just have a few minutes of housekeeping. If I could ask everybody in the audience to make sure that your cell phone is turned off or at least to the point where it will not ring during this event. We've asked the candidates not to use their phone to enhance their presentation. And so we would respect that you would have your phones markedly turned off. Secondly, we ask that all members of the audience hold applause for any of the responses that you hear until the end of the forum. That way, it allows more time for more questions during the forum. So all six that we invited are here. And that's delightful for us because that isn't always the case. And so it's wonderful that all six chose to be here. So I'm just going to go from kind of a backward alphabetizing, from your right to your left, District 1 to District 3, excuse me, District 4. And at your far right is William Allen, the incumbent of District 1. The challenger for that seat is Bernie Brandt. District 2, we have Travis Keys and Marcus Wright Jr. And District 4, Rebecca Ricks and Sarah Beth Wyatt. And Sarah is the incumbent for that seat. Please remember that any views you hear, any opinions you hear from the candidates tonight are theirs and they do not represent any of the organizations that are sponsoring this event. And let me now introduce you to the moderator of this forum. Dr. Lindsay Person is the Assistant Professor of Literary Studies at the University of South Florida. She will be asking the questions tonight. The timers will be Sue Schultz and Julie Hart. And later on, and Lindsay will mention this, if you have some questions, put a hand up. And the three folks right here from the League of Women Voters will get you a card so you can write that question down. So, Dr. Person.
Good evening, welcome everyone. Glad to see so many faces in the audience. I too have a few rules for this evening that I will share as we get started. Each candidate will have one minute to first provide a self-introduction by way of an opening statement. This will be followed by a series of questions. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes to answer their question. There will be no rebuttal comments from candidates. The forum will conclude with each candidate giving a one-minute closing statement. A yellow warning sign will be shown when 20 seconds remain. And a red stop sign will be shown when the candidate's time is up. The candidates have not been provided the questions in advance. Questions will be rotated so that a different candidate answers first for each question. Questions for the first part of the forum were developed and reviewed by a small committee. During the second part of the forum, candidates will be asked to respond to questions submitted by members of the audience of the Polk County community, including members of the audience. We do have a couple that were submitted by email as well. Members of the audience, as been mentioned, who would like to submit a question are asked to do so by using an index card that is available. So again, the procedure for that is if you have a question, you can raise a hand and one of these ladies will bring an index card to you. We thank each of the candidates for being with us today. We ask that all forum candidates to speak only for themselves and not provide information about or insight into their opponents. We look to candidates to help us understand their policy positions, their problem-solving skills, and their values so that we can make better choices as informed voters. So this is a little awkward, but I will do some pivoting so that I can talk to candidates as well as you all. And hopefully, everyone will be able to hear. So we will start first with opening statements and we will go in that alphabetical order to get started. So our first opening statement, we'll turn to you, William Allen.
Good evening, William Allen here. And I currently serve as the Chair of the School Board and I represent District 1. So that goes from Jesse Keen all the way down to 540 Scott Lake Elementary. And I'm happy to serve in that capacity. Just to give you a little bit of background, I did grow up, I'm deeply rooted within Polk County Public Schools, going to Jamesy Stevens in Bartow, then Union Academy, Bartow Middle, and graduated Bartow High School barely. And I say I barely graduated Bartow High School in 1992. And then worked as a sheet metal mechanic for six years. And then went through a huge spiritual transformation when I was about 22. And that took me on a trajectory towards higher education. So when I say, and you hear me say this all the time, that I believe that education is a pillar of hope. And it was for me. And I hope that we can extend that to all 117,000 students within Polk County. And I'm so happy to be here tonight with y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. Turned over Bernie Brandt. Perfect. You guys know how to do this.
Good evening. Candidate in the race for District 1. I didn't really have an interest in any sort of politics until my wife and I had our first child last spring. And I realized that I needed to be more invested not only in my child's future, but in the future of everyone's children. And I'm running for school board because I want to be someone that inspires other people in our community. We have roughly 740,000 and change citizens in Polk County. And I want to be the board member that inspires people to speak out and makes them comfortable and makes them understand that the board cares and is going to listen to them.
Good evening. Polk County resident, born and raised here, running for seat in District 2. District 2 runs from Northlake Hamilton west to 27 and all the way up to the Four Corners area. A little bit about me, I am married and the father of two beautiful girls who are in Polk County Public Schools. Education background, I have an organizational, a bachelor's degree in organizational management and a master's of science in leadership. And a proud product of Polk County Public Schools, I graduated from Haynes City Senior High School. And what I would tell you is the big things that I'm about is school safety, right? Making sure we retain and attract the best educational personnel. Making sure that we have financial accountability and responsibility. I currently serve as the Chair of the Finance and Audit Committee. And also, finally, that we provide choice to the parents because the parents know best what's for their children. And I appreciate each one of you being here tonight.
Greetings and humble salutations to you all. My name is Marcus Wright Jr. Some know me as MJ Wright. I am a candidate for Polk County School Board representing District Number 2 as well. And he's already explained that boundary to you. A little bit about myself, I was born and raised in the Little Big City of Haynes City, Florida. Notice I say Little Big City because it is a great city. Went through public school there, attended Summerlin Military Academy for high school before leaving to attend one of the greatest HBCUs in all of the land. I'm going to leave that open, I'll let you fill that in. And then coming back to work for our school district in our district office under the Jackie Byrd administration and then one year under the current administration, the Fred Hyde administration. And then now working as a Director of Development at Talbot House Ministries. My main platform is strengthening our relationship between our community and our school district as well as faculty and staff morale.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Ricks. I'm running for Polk County School Board, District 4. I was born in Oklahoma and I was raised in New York. And I've lived in Polk County since 2001. I've been married for 20 years to a third-generation Polk County boy who's here tonight. Hi Greg, there you go. I got a wave. And I have two hot mess little boys, age 3 and 6. And for real, they are the best thing that ever happened to me, but they give me a run for my money. Like they make Dennis the Minus looks good. By trade, I'm an Algebra II teacher. And in fact, I've been teaching for 32 years. My entire family's full of teachers, so education is a family business. It's not just my passion. I've been a teacher for, in education, for 23 years. In fact, little, in 3rd grade. So if you want anything, 3rd grade Marcus was part of a scandal where there were some doors turned off the hinges. So I'm willing to give that in later. But anyway.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Beth Wyatt and I am running for school board seat, District 4. I currently serve on the school board and have since 2016. So a little bit about me, I am a proud product of Polk County Public Schools. I graduated from Winter Haven High School, went off to the University of Florida, came back and was working for a nonprofit with lots of students, doing scholarship programs, mentorship programs, and was running into a lot of red tape with Polk County Public Schools. So I was complaining to my parents about it quite a bit at Friday night dinners. And my dad finally looked at me and said, "Listen, you can shut up or do something about it, but we're not talking about this every week." And so I decided to run for school board. It was the best decision I've ever made. I have spent the past eight years really getting to understand all of the multi-faces of our school district. We have made some huge strides since 2016. 2016 education looked very different than it does in 2024. We had a little thing called COVID, which changed everything that we do. But we've been able to navigate those. We have a great new superintendent. And we've made some huge strides. So I'm looking to continue that success. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. So we will turn this first question to Bernie Brandt and then we will go on down the line as we did. So what specific goals or practices do you hope to accomplish if elected?
I have three main goals I want to accomplish if I'm elected. The first is to be a transparent and responsible steward of our tax money as Polk County taxpayers. The second is to make Polk County schools more welcoming, exciting, accepting, and inclusive than they are today for students and staff. And the third is, as I said earlier, to be passionate and inspire the people of Polk County to speak out, to make them feel comfortable addressing the board, make them feel like board members are part of the community, and overall, take the mentality that the board is an organization that governs and turn it into an organization that works for the people.
So as I already told you in the introduction, my four main areas are school safety. The school safety is not just mean though having guardians in the school. It also means the design of these schools. I have a background in construction, so I'm very passionate about that. It also means mental health, providing enough mental health counselors to our students and our staff. Secondly, financial accountability and responsibility. We want to make sure, again, that we're using our taxpayer dollars correctly, that we're allocating the resources we have appropriately, addressing issues such as salary compression amongst our teachers. Third is attracting and retaining the best educational personnel. We have teachers that are leaving in droves, Polk County, for other counties. That is because of, number one, salaries. We need to address those issues. And what benefits have we given them to keep them here? And finally, choice. I want to make sure we're providing the best choices for our students. That could be through STEM education, career academies, and enhancing the academic performances within the classroom to make sure they have the best opportunities at success.
Thank you. The first thing on my, one of my goals is first, that what I mentioned earlier, are strengthening our relationship between our community and our school district. Realizing that we can't represent the people if we don't know what the people are currently going through. Realizing everybody cannot make it to a school board meeting at 5:00 PM on a Tuesday afternoon, especially if you're living in District 2 and school board meetings are in Bartow. And that's just the reality of where we are. And so if. On hall meetings. Let's bring our leaders outside of their offices and into our communities and they can hear the concerns of the people and know what the people are going through. Secondly, the big thing for me is our academic progression. Meaning I would like to see just how we have IB high schools and STEM middle schools and IB elementary schools. I would like to see if we have an IB high school, we have an IB feeder middle school and an IB feeder elementary school instead of asking our students to transfer between tracks of attractors at that particular school. So I would love to see that. And then lastly, but certainly not least, is certainly our staff and faculty morale. We've got to get it up. We've got to make sure that even though we can't pay them the salary that they deserve and we can. At least let them know that they are loved and cherished as a family of educators in Polk County.
My three things are rights, resources, and results. Right now, 15% of our students have a learning disability and 15% of our students are ESOL, English as a Second Language. We need to make sure that we're meeting these students on their unique abilities. I am a proponent of choice. And one of the best things we have in Polk County right now is Robert's Academy that really specializes and helps students with dyslexia. If we could do that across the board and have more schools that offer those choices and those options to parents. Robert's Academy is always full. And we need those across the county, not just in Lakeland. Like you said, it's a long way. The county's a big county. Resources. I don't have to tell you that we're growing. We're the fastest-growing county in the United States. 30,000 to 50,000 new families are moving into Polk County every year. That means we need to make sure the resources for those students are available and the resources for the teachers in every way possible. And results. Right now, there are 67 counties in the state of Florida. We're 57 among 67 in reading. We really need to go back to reading, writing, and arithmetic and make sure those scores come up. And one of the ways I think that we do that is talking about truancy. And right now, there are 35% of our high school students have missed almost four weeks of school. So our truancy levels are high, our reading levels are low. And I believe that there's a direct correlation between that. So rights, resources, results, Rebecca Ricks.
Thank you. So I want to see every school be a destination. There is no reason that we have programs at magnet schools, we have programs at choice schools. Every neighborhood school should be a school that someone wants to choose. There shouldn't be something that you have to transfer across the city or transfer across the district to be able to go to an arts school or to be able to go to an IB school. Every school needs to have options of choice. It may be that the school that you are at is a Cambridge program and you want to go to an IP program. That's great. But every school needs to have an advanced curriculum program. Every school needs to have career academies that meet the needs of the students. One of the goals that we're currently working on is making sure that every high school has an advanced curriculum program, whether it's ACE, IP, AP, Collegiate Academy, to make sure that students are able to take those higher-level courses. Collaboration. One of the things that I'm really proud of in the past eight years is our community liaisons. These staff members, it was piloted in Winter Haven. These staff members are specifically designed to go out in the community and bridge the divide between the community and the schools. If a business wants to get involved, they can meet with this person and say, "Hey, you know, we're interested in reading at a local school or we're interested in getting into culinary." And they can, the community liaison marries them to the school that best suits their needs as well. And then technology. Technology is a little bit terrifying at the moment. It is a great tool, but we need to make sure that our students understand how to use it and that we are teaching them not just how to use social media, but also how to talk to people in person.
So my number one goal is basically what our number one objective is within our strategic plan, is student outcomes. I want us to be the top-rated school district in the state of Florida. So student success is my initiative that I ran on in 2020 and I believe in it wholeheartedly. And that relates really to my background. Like I said, I worked, you know, within a warehouse for six years. And I think there's an element of working with the hands and industry-based certifications and making sure that we're offering that for students, workforce readiness, but college readiness as well. I teach at Florida Southern. I've been there 11 years. I teach interactive and game design. So I see it from that perspective. Just talking earlier tonight, we were talking about dual enrollment options for our kids. I know my daughter here is in the audience. She graduated high school with 20 hours of dual enrollment. So what are we doing to make sure that we're giving the best and the most rigorous options for our students? So access would be number two for me, student success, number one. So we talk a lot about choices and that conversation around choice is way different today. And I could say that we are adamantly working, you know, towards this. We want to have access to the best choices all across the county. So for example, let's look at our IB, AP, Cambridge programs. We're extending and growing those as well. And then the last one is community partnerships. I mean, I think about all the initiatives around here and the community involvement. We can do it. It takes a village. So we want to build those and make sure that we have access for you to come through our doors and serve our students.
Thank you all very much. Our next question, we are going to start with Travis Keys. And the question for you is, well, the question for everyone, the second question for everyone is, "In what ways would you work to advocate for Polk County Public Schools, public school staff, and students in Tallahassee?"
So that's a great question. I think that starts with having relationships. So my professional career, I'm a relationship manager at South State Bank. So relationships is what I do well. I already have a working relationship with the entire Polk County delegation. They know me on a first-name basis. I have their cell phone numbers. And I've been to Tallahassee multiple times already advocating for us. So I think that's where the key is, is making sure we have those relationships, find out what's happening and what's going on not only within our schools, but in the community. The most important part about that is boots on the ground. So I have a track record of serving in the community. I've been doing this a long time. And if you don't know what's going on in your community, you can't properly advocate amongst those lawmakers for your community. So for me, it's having boots on the ground first and then having relationships with that delegation.
I would definitely agree with that relationship portion and also making sure that we also are letting them know these are the needs of our community. I think a big thing is, and I've done some time in lobbying in Tallahassee for different things, just came back recently from lobbying for our VPK programs and raising the federal poverty level just so we can kind of get that affordable housing. That was on my working job. But we need to also make sure they realize that this is the reality of what we're going through. I think sometimes when you are in Tallahassee and you're away from your community, you sometimes may lose focus of what the current needs are. And so that's a big thing of making sure that our current legislation knows what the need is of our school system. This is what we need for our families and our educators and our faculty and staff to thrive in our community. And if we don't educate them on what we need, how can we expect them to know what is needed for when it's time to vote in their chambers?
Okay, so this is literally what I do. I work on legislation. Right now, this year in Polk, in Tallahassee, imagine a Rima paper, this thick. That's how much new policy was passed, education policy. Triple that was introduced, but that's how much was passed. Some of it I advocated for, some of it I advocated against. But I've read every single page of that several times. I know exactly what's coming up, what's going on. Couple of things that I advocated this year that did get passed was there was a glitch in Unique Abilities. Where three-year-olds, if their birthday was a certain time, they wouldn't be able to receive funding for almost a whole year till they turned four because their birthday wasn't September 1st. I advocated for the New World Scholarship to add math to it. We've been asking for that for years. We've had reading scholarships, but I'm an Algebra II teacher and a math teacher. Math, we need to be able to add that to it. So these things are what I've been working on for years. That's what I've done the last eight years. I said, "Okay, I'm going to sit down and see if we need something fixed. How do we fix it?" And the answer is where you have to do it in Tallahassee. So we'll go to Tallahassee and fix it. Now I want to make sure that the intent in Tallahassee is put into practice here because intent doesn't always show up very well down at the bottom, down here. So just because they think it's going to work, when we get it down here into the local level, we need to make sure that it's being implemented in the right way and that we do have somebody who can go back to Tallahassee and say, "Let's fix this. This isn't working how you think it's going to work. Let's make it work right."
Thank you. So over the past eight years, we've increased our per-people funding from the state by over 25%. How have we done that? We have worked closely with our delegation. We've ensured that they understand what the needs are in Polk County, that they understand that funding is an issue. And one of the things that I'm really proud of is not just going up there as a school board member because how many of you would like more money to do your job? Right? That's when a school board member goes to Tallahassee and says, "Hey, we need more money to teach kids." That's what they hear, is "I want more money to do my job." But when you take people from the business community with you, when you take people that see that education is economic development with you as well and they're saying, "These are things that are wrong with our education policy. These are things that we need to change to make sure that we're turning out the best and brightest students every day." Legislators listen to that too. It is very impactful when you take others with you. So I encourage, if any of you want to go to Tallahassee with me for education policy, let me know. We can set up that trip. But that's a really important part of the process, is making sure that we're going up there, but also that the community's voice is being heard. It's identifying problems in Polk County Public Schools that are affecting us. So if you'll remember, back in 2016, 2017, 2018, we were moving teachers the second week of school because that's when VAM scores came out. The testing scores came out in June, but we didn't get the VAM scores until the second week of school. And then we had to move people because of that. And then we had to move people because of that. We were able to lobby in Tallahassee that we now get test scores, VAM scores no later than July 31st, so we don't have to move students, move teachers out of classrooms in the first week of school.
So, you know, as it relates to advocacy, I think it starts at the local level as well, and then works our way up towards Tallahassee. And I think we can extend it beyond there as well. So I know for me personally, as I'm roaming around District 1 schools, I tend to reach out to all my local officials, and I ask them and invite them to visit schools with me. So I've pretty much had majority of our City of Lakeland Commission with me, visiting within District 1 schools, so they can be in the classroom. I mean, I've got these vivid pictures of Mayor Mutt's on his hands and knees, acting like a horse in one of the elementary schools in Lakeland. So I know our delegates are involved. I see Guy in the back as well, so I really appreciate their service. Then from the Tallahassee level, I just, you know, again, those relational things are so important to us as sitting school board members and potentially future board members, you have to have those relationships. I think about when Josie Tomco was chairing the Appropriation Committee, and we changed that DCF, which is basically a part of the budget and the formula, that gave us about $80 million new revenue coming into Polk County. So those are extremely important things. And then I think of State Representative Meli Bell, great relationship with her, and she's been a fierce advocate for junior achievement. And I served on that board. We actually just gained $1.5 million appropriation, and that was her ask that's coming back into Polk County to do some great things.
So not to do think that relationships are the most important part of this. And it goes both ways. As a board member, you are able to have a louder voice when it comes to speaking with Tallahassee politicians. And then you have a responsibility to take what you learn in Tallahassee, back to the community, and educate your constituents, get their opinions, see how they feel about it, and then take it back to Tallahassee. You have to keep that open, revolving line of communication, because things are constantly changing locally, things are constantly changing in other parts of the state, and things are constantly changing in Tallahassee. And it's important that everyone is constantly up to speed with what is going on in other areas, so that nobody overlooks anything.
Thank you all. So for question three, we will start with Marcus, right? And question three, teacher pay, it's been a hot topic, right? And some of you have even mentioned this. Now that starting teacher pay is more competitive, how will you work to address salary compression for experienced teachers?
So I'll tell you first, I'll address the elephant in the room. I am the product of a 25-plus-year school teacher. So my mother, who's sitting in the back, has been a school teacher for over 25 years. It's basically our family business, if you will so to speak, because that's what everybody does on my mother's side, is in education. The first thing is, we have to realize that our teachers, our teachers, our secretaries, our bus drivers, our custodians, they are the boots on the ground. Our resources should be mandated in trying to make sure that they have everything that they need first. Not our district office, not our other places, we need to make sure that the resources lie in the school. One thing we have to realize is, too, that we understand that Tallahassee does not give us all the money that we need, or that we deserve even so, because we really deserve the money, and we're not getting that. So we need to make sure, back to that question before, that we're making sure that we are lobbying to our Tallahassee delegation. This is what we need to be fighting for, because truth be told, if we're not educating our kids, what are we doing for our future? If we don't have a living wage for our teachers and our families in Polk County, what are we doing for our future? And truth be told, if you're not motivated through salary, and you're not motivated through benefits, sometimes that job goes lacking, because that's why we're losing teachers to other careers, because they need something to take care of their family just as well as we do in the business community as well. So that's what my proposal is, that we need to work and push our delegation to give us what we deserve for our teachers.
I agree that teacher pay needs to be higher. It really does. We have the highest, one of the highest starting pays. So we're recruiting, because we have 300 openings right now. So we're trying to get more teachers in. But it's really, we're not going to keep them if we can't pay them what they're worth later on. As someone who's had years of experience teaching, I want to be paid for my 20 years' worth of experience. And I think we all expect that we stay at a job and you want to get raises. Teachers don't start teaching because they're going to make money. We don't. We start teaching and we stay teaching because you love it and you love the students. But at some point, it starts to hurt a little bit when you feel taken advantage of, that you feel like you have to, you're staying for the students and not necessarily for the pay. So I agree, we need to make sure that we can raise that. The governor has tried to pass money every year for us to do that. Last, this year, they again pressed a bill that says $2,000 more is what they should get. Now, that doesn't seem, that's not like, that's a drop in the bucket. So if you're raising pay $2,000 every year, it's going to take us 10 years to get to a competitive salary on what we want, on what most teachers think. So I would like to say that that is something we need to work on. The unions have worked on that, and we need to continue to push for that in Polk County.
Thank you. I am proud to report that we have gotten to that starting salary almost two full years ahead of schedule, which means that we can focus on compression now. That was the goal, and making sure that we could get there as quickly as possible. We didn't want to drag our feet, because we wanted to make sure that we could address compression as soon as possible. As soon as it came out that there was a mandatory start, we knew that that was going to be coming. Some of the things that we need to be doing a better job of, I think, specifically in Polk County, is looking at our benefits and really advertising our benefits. We are a zero-premium county. We are one of the only zero-premium counties, which means that nobody is paying for their health insurance. It is part of their benefit package. If they go teach in a neighboring county, we often get people back, because when they get their paycheck, they realize, oh, they took insurance out, now I'm making less. So we need to be doing a better job of advertising that. We recently completed an efficiency audit. The goal of that is to make sure that we are able to find every dollar where it is going, and make sure we know that there are no honey holes of things that we could be doing better or more efficiently. One of the big things that came from that is rezoning our schools, to make sure that we're not blessing kids halfway across the county, when there's a school right next door to them that they could be going to, that they would like to choose. Making sure that students have access to those, so that we can save in transportation, we can save in some of those areas. Once we have all of those implemented, we need to start to look at doing a referendum. So there are most districts in Central Florida, we are one of the few that has not done a referendum for a mill, and we need to start looking at what that looks like in Polk County.
Yeah, so when the governor mandated that the starting pay moved to $47,500, you know, we felt that, and that tension was real for our veteran teachers. And I would say that the current board actively moved on this to actually change a policy that for teachers basically that served 13 years or longer, we changed the terminal time sick payout from 50% to 100% to honor those teachers that have committed 13 years or longer. Some other things that I think, you know, we've done progressively is worked on our postgraduate stipends. And that's been a slow progression, but if we look at the data around the Central Florida School Board Coalition, there's about 15 school districts in that coalition. We're ranked number three. So I know we have so many educators out there in the audience, and I know we have some doctors. So if you have a doctorate and you're serving in the classroom, you get about a $6,700 stipend on top of your base salary allocation. So we've definitely climbed that to be ranked number three, and I think we could do more in those areas. So, and just as Sarah Beth mentioned, yes, we are working on compression. We did that last year, and we're right in the middle of that now. And I've actually been following the negotiations currently and watching the videos on that, so.
I think you can learn a lot from watching the way other people do things and succeed. There is a referendum on the ballot in November in our neighbors to the west, Hillsborough County, that if it passes, will increase the millage rate there and bring in close to $180 million additionally into their school district. And that money has already been tabbed specifically for teacher and staff raises. I think we could learn from that. I would like to push for something like that. And like other people have said, also be loud and bring things to Tallahassee and tell them, we need to retain teachers, we need teachers to be happy, because when teachers are happy and they're getting paid well, they're comfortable, and when they're comfortable, they are able to put all of their energy into teaching instead of worrying about bills or second jobs.
So I have two stories about this that are near and dear to my heart. One of those is, my mother recently retired from Polk County Public Schools after 26 years of service. When I was in in 1999, other who just recently graduated after 26 years of service. That is a gross injustice. Another one of those is, I substitute taught during, I had a night job and substitute taught during the day, and I got off position because of my expertise in that particular field to come to one of our vocational schools. Right off the bat, they took 10 years of experience off of my vocational experience and say, we don't get that when you're coming in. And so what that would do is that dropped the wage down to where I would have to take an $8,000 pay cut from what I was currently making if I wanted to come into the education profession. So salary is a real thing, salary compression is an even more serious thing. And while I agree that we need to look at the millage rates, I think that we need to have a comprehensive review on the budget. I know we should do an efficiency exam, but what I think we need to do is take business leaders from the community, those who have a financial acumen and understand budgets, and have a comprehensive review from the community, from the budget, because those are the taxpayers that are supplying that. And let's have some real discussions about where we can make room to increase teacher salaries.
Thank you all. And I must say, every one of you is really good at following the procedure, so thank you. You're making my job very easy. So the next question, we'll start with Rebecca Ricks. What involvement have you had with Polk County's public schools, such as committees you've served on, maybe calendar committee, discipline committee, curriculum committee, textbook selection, et cetera?
So currently, I'm on the State Board of Music Education, which is for all the music programs in the state of Florida. So I work on that. And that really takes care of all the competitions that they do, all the music competitions, all the all-state competitions and things like that, so I work on that. As far as the county level, I've taught here, I started a business here, I started a tutoring business, and that was one of the reasons I wanted to run in the first place, because our levels were low. And when I started to volunteer, especially for SAT and ACT prep, I noticed that there was a huge discrepancy in what our students should know and what our test scores were going to be, especially for those 10th grade reading scores. So we needed to make sure, so I volunteer tutoring, and I started a tutoring program that we worked with students here in Polk County. And my other big part is making sure that a lot of the legislation that we work on in the state level is pushed and implemented properly down here on the county level. So making sure that when we read those, that it's going to affect and help our county here, what's going to be best for Polk.
Thank you. So I currently serve on the Calendar Committee and the Value Adjustment Board, or my liaison, where I'm a liaison from a board member. I also serve on Polk Vision's Board of Directors. I've previously served on their operating board, and have had the opportunity to serve on many of their A-teams, or what, those are what they call their committees. Fun fact, Polk Vision, when they tell you you can serve on all the education committees, you should ask them how many there are, because there are seven now, I believe. And it is, they will sign you up for all of them. But it's been a great opportunity to get to really dive in with the community on how we can support our schools best. I've also served on the Junior Achievement Board. I have gotten to judge 3DE, which is the new educational model that's come to Tennerock, where they really bring curriculum into, sorry, the business acumen into the curriculum. So I judged a competition that was based on UPS marketing. Get your high schoolers excited about a topic, and they can get creative. So it was coming to a commercial near you, I'm sure. I've also served on the Polk Education Foundation Board. I am on the Executive Board for Winter Haven's Public Education Partnership. I've served on the Arts Council for the City of Winter Haven. And in my role as Development Director at Theater Winter Haven, we established the Drama Time Live Program, which goes into all of our Winter Haven elementary schools, realizing that storytelling is a very, very live part of literacy, going into schools so that they can see literacy come to life. I think that is, that is all.
Do you sleep at night? So, yeah, just to unravel some things, I'm really excited to serve as a board member with the Junior Achievement at Polk County. I'm really excited about the work that's been done in that board. Like I said, State Representative Meli Bell brought back $1.5 million appropriation this year, and we're going to see BizTown. I don't know if you're familiar with BizTown, there's basically a location in Tampa, and we're going to offer financial literacy pretty much to all 4th graders in Polk County. Extremely excited about that. I get to serve on the Polk Education Foundation as well. Crystal Lake Elementary, I serve on their cabinet. And then I was thinking at the state level with the Florida School Board Association, have a chance to serve as Board Director, was plucked recently to serve as one of their nominating committee members, basically choose their exec committee at state level. And then just recently, was asked by the sitting president to chair the Federal Advocacy Subcommittee, so I'm really excited, working with Scott Franklin's office at the federal level as well. So another one that I'm really excited about as well, I was asked to serve on the Artificial Task Force with the Florida School Board Association. As mentioned, I teach interactive and game design, so I'm really into new media technology, and I'd like Polk to really be on the forefront of the adoption and the implementation of effective AI.
I don't have quite nearly as impressive of a resume, working with the school system as everyone else here does. Since I was 18, I have officiated high school sports, baseball, basketball, and softball. And I was unable to get into some volunteer programs that I wanted to this past spring, simply because of some medical issues with our baby. But I promise you that if I'm elected, I will do everything I can to be in and around the schools and in and around the communities.
So if you want to talk about community partnerships, we could be here all night, but I'll tell you some of the ones that I'm most proud about is, the first is, I'm serving as the Second Chair of the Audit and Finance Committee, where I currently chair my second, third year term. I'm also the Co-Chair of the Attendance Boundary Committee, of which I've served on since its inception. They joke that there is no, there's no limit to that, so you're on there until you either, you're pushed to serve as the Northeast, or just finished up, Northeast Polk Chamber of Commerce. I was a Co-Chair of the Youth Leadership Committee. That's where we take students, local high school students, take them through a leadership program, to entice them to stay in the county, go off and get whatever higher education they want, or vocational education, but bring their skills back. As President of our Rotary Club for three years consecutively, I led the scholarship initiative there. Also just recently appointed to the Heart of Florida Education Foundation. And one of my favorite things is, as a Commercial Relationship Officer at South State Bank, I get to go out and teach financial literacy to middle schoolers, which is probably the most rewarding thing of those that I do, because I see real results, and they're impacting not only the students, but their families as well.
So mine started a little bit differently than everybody else. I started as a volunteer at Polk County Public Schools in high school, if you believe it or not. For those of you who don't know, I'll address that elephant as well. I am very young, I'm only 25. And so I started as a volunteer that turned into my internship. So I came back from college and wanted to get more involved, and wanted to be in our education system, that turned into my internship, which turned into my full-time job. It was supposed to be a one-summer internship, that turned into four years of an internship, and it turned into my full-time job. So I then became an Associate Technician of IT and Data within the WorkFirst Education Department. And then after that, continued that job, and then went on to be known as what you call a Special Projects Person. I helped plan all the graduations for Polk County Public Schools, so there were 34 at that time. And then as well as helping out of our board meetings and different things that required a little bit more task of a work, because we were in COVID at that point in time. I'm also sitting on the Freshman Academy for Davenport High School right now, and helping them develop their freshman academy. They are aiming to have model status and making sure that their freshmen are well-equipped, so that when they graduate, they are great model citizens for our community. Also, also sitting on the Winter Haven Public Education Partnership with Sarah Beth as the Chair. I am on the Youth Leadership Polk Advisory Council, and then also was a representative on the Superintendent Search Committee.
All right, thank you all. So question five, we will start with Sarah Beth Wyatt. So are you familiar with the Polk Public School System's current policy for reviewing books and other curricula that are challenged in schools? What changes or improvements, if any, would you make to that process?
Thank you. So I am very familiar with our process, as I'm sure many of us are over the past few years. So Polk County, when the state said that we had to do something with books, which we, we were well ahead of the game, and that we already had a process for reviewing books. Our process for reviewing books has actually been in place for decades. Anytime a book is challenged, it goes to the school level, the school has a committee that reviews the book, they are required to read the entire book, and then they determine whether, not whether it's a good book or a bad book, but whether or not it is developmentally appropriate for those students in that grade level. So if you're at the kindergarten, at the elementary level, is this appropriate for kindergartners? If you're at the high school level, is this appropriate for 16-year-olds? That process, like I said, has been in place in decades, for decades. Our superintendent has actually been called to Tallahassee to testify as to what our process is, because it is now the recommendation for the state as to what the state does. Now, once those books, once the decision is made, it can be appealed. If it is appealed, then it goes through a second round of committees. The superintendent brings us the recommendation, and to be completely honest, the recommendations have been across the board this year. Many of them, if not most of them, have been upheld, that the book is fine to be in schools. We have had a couple that have been removed. We've also, the most recent list of books we got that were being challenged, when it list came across our desk, there were several that were already being taken out of circulation this year, just because they have been in our schools for so many decades that they are not, they're ready to be cycled out anyways. So we're very familiar with the process.
Yeah, so when we think about, you know, the progression of this policy development, as Sarah mentioned, our policy's been a longstanding policy, and state law has pretty much required us to revamp that policy at least three times, which I think has caused frustration in general across the board, even for individuals that are trying to challenge books, because it might slow down the process as we're going through, working on our policy adoption, because it is a very slow process when you're doing policy development. So, you know, I think for me personally, you know, when we think about challenging a book or anything like that, you know, again, it's been a longstanding opportunity. And I think we always saw it more as a school-level decision. So for example, if, you know, a good friend of mine maybe has a child that's reading way above grade level, but, you know, didn't feel like they wanted their kid to read this particular
above grade level, but, you know, didn't feel like they wanted their kid to read this particular book, they can, you know, just work individually with the teacher. But we did have some pretty archaic systems in place for families to, you know, maybe not allow their kids to actually have access to a book within our library system. So I've advocated wholeheartedly to superintendent that we update our software, and we have. And basically, you know, I would like to see in that where a parent can choose, click on a radio button on a resource, that they would not want their child to have access to that. So I, I see it whole, like holistically with the policy and then the implementation, implementation from a procedure standpoint.
I agree with what Dr. being a responsibility of the family, and the system developing something that allows parents to have easy access to like a radio button, or something on a site that can say, "I don't want my child to have access to a particular resource." I think that having a variety of resources is important to having a well-rounded education system. And if I don't want something in my child's hands, it's not necessarily the appropriate thing for me to do, to say that Dr. Allen's children can't have it in their hands. So the book review process, to me, from my understanding, is drawn out, but it is lacking a rubric that is black and white for yes or no. It seems very subjective. From what I understand, and I would like to see it go in a direction that is more objective. The book either meets criteria or doesn't, and also puts it back in the hands of the families.
Oh, we're going to sound like a broken record. So I will tell you, policy is good, but if you can't enact that policy, the policy means nothing. So we have, and I can tell you, we have been on this system, right? And when you get past a certain timeline on the, what is now currently the opt-out policy, I have had numerous parents come back and tell me they're locked out and they can't go in and choose. And then we have the option to go in there and look at the books, and we can actually choose as parents, if there's certain titles we want, them not to have access to they don't. We haven't been able to access that system. Here. The choice needs to be in the hands of the parents, let the parents decide what's the best for their students, but then make sure that system works. Hello? And if we have the access going to the parents, I think we'd solve a lot of these problems with protesting books and trying to take things out, because it would be in the hands of the parents to do that very same thing that they're arguing about.
I'll say briefly, and, and just to start off, I think we need to put the more trust into our librarians. They've went through some training, they've understand what it takes to be a librarian. They've, they've, they've not just come upon this job, but they've went through some of the training courses and understand what it takes to be a librarian. And so we need to also trust them in their position and what they're doing. Now, I'm a big proponent, excuse me, of our parents having, you know, the ability to tell what their child, I, I grew up in school, I knew what books I could not take home to my mom and daddy. That's just the reality of it. I knew what I could not take home, and that is still the case today. There are some parents who their, their child knows what you can and cannot take home. And so if we're going to opt out, we use the library system. They scan these books out. If that parent is going in and making sure that they don't want that child to read that book, hey, they can upload, there should be some type of way. We have our apps for everything else, where they can go inside of this app, block this book from this child checking it out. And when they scan this book, when the librarian scans this book, it does not check out to that child. I think we've, we've kind of over, overcomplicated it, if you ask me, and we need to simplify it and just say, we have the respect and, and, and the trust in our librarians, but we also have this option available to our parents, and it's accessible to our parents to meet your child's need.
Okay, so my question would be, how many books has the board voted to keep in schools? And how many books has the board voted to take out of schools? The answer is zero, because no books have ever actually come in front of the board and been voted on. So the process we have, in two and a half years since the process started, no book has come in front of the school board for them to vote on. So we have a process, it takes two and a half years, seems really long time. We have a process of opting out, for teachers, for parents to opt out. Again, the system locks you out. You can't get in and out of the system. It's very, very hard to use. So you can say we have a system all you want to, but the system doesn't work. There's a process for the books, but they've never come in front of the school board. So no one on the school board right now has had to say whether they would or wouldn't remove a book, because it's never come before them.
Thank you all. And I do just want to remind members of the audience that if you have a question you'd like to pose to the panel, please do feel free to raise your hand, and our ladies will come around with a, an index card if you write that question down. So we are going to head, go ahead and move forward with some more questions that were reviewed by the small committee for this group, and we are going to filter through some of those questions that are coming from the audience. So question six, and we are back to starting William Allen. Are you in favor of Polk County Schools establishing a school chaplain program? And if so, what guidelines would you recommend?
That's a great question. I mean, obviously, that was just put in the statute, so that will come to us in a policy. And I would say in general, we already have faith-based individuals on our campuses. So I'm not opposed to that in any way. I think for me, I'm, I'm a deeply spiritual person, and when I think about our strategic plan and our last initiative around shaping the whole student, you know, I don't think we should be afraid of thinking, right, and pondering. For me, I mean, you know, I gravitate to meditating on God's Word, day and night, and with the hopes that I would be like a tree that's planted by the rivers of water, right? So that's for me personally. But I think there is something about meditation, and, and so I'm not opposed to that. I just know that right now we have, you know, we have faith-based organizations that can be on our campuses already, before school time, right? Once school begins, that's not the case. It, it can't be, you know, proselytized, in a sense, is what the current policy says. But religion can be, you know, in a nonpartisan way on our campuses, so I'm not opposed to it.
I followed very closely the bill that went through Tallahassee to allow school districts to invite chaplains into their schools. And one thing that concerned me that is making me opposed to it, is that there were amendments brought up that were voted down. And a very important amendment was brought up to specifically prevent any religious leader from being on campus and proselytizing, soliciting students to engage in religious discussion or come to services. And I think it's important that, to have religious leaders on our campuses, which are government facilities that are supposed to be religiously neutral, there needs to be a barrier in place so that a student who practices Islam is not being approached by a Jewish religious leader and made to feel uncomfortable. Or a student who practices Christianity is not being approached by a Buddhist or Islamic leader to maybe, to be, feel uncomfortable. I'm not opposed to having religion on campus, but I think there need to be barriers so that every student feels like they are safe from having another religion come and be, I don't want to say pushed on them, but unsolicitedly brought into their lives.
So I will tell you, right off the bat, I'm not going to get deep into it. I am not opposed to it at all, as a man of faith, and I base my decisions, when I look at them, on what does the word say? So I would tell you, having access to that from a student is very important, no matter what their background or beliefs are. And the, we're talking about growing the whole child, and that involves spirituality as well. I think that when the challenges they face in society today are enough already, and if they don't have access to those things, that it can be detrimental. So I would say allowing access, while I'm not opposed to it, allowing access for all as they choose would be an effective measure for that.
So I'll, I'll tell you, I am a big man of faith myself, and so I'm, I'm not opposed to it with guidelines. And so we realize that we are in a time now where anybody can go online and get a degree that says they're clergy. That's just the reality of where we are. And so we need to see some guidelines in this policy. And that, that's going to be the big thing that I look for, is what are the guidelines for this? What, what is it saying about background checks? Because at the end of the day, these are people's kids that we're talking about. And, and if you want to make somebody up mad, do something with their kids, and you're going to see a whole nother side of them. And so we need to make sure that there are some parameters in place. I am a big proponent of it. I think, I had some great pastors growing up that kind of shaped me into the person that I am today, but there also were some parameters that I could not do and say around that pastor, or search vice versa. And so we need to see, make sure that there are some parameters in place in that policy to make sure that we're not just letting anybody who comes with a title into our schools. But you need to show that if this person is a part of your church, okay? Make sure that that is the case, and that, that if, you know, that that parent is okay. Because at the end of the day, if I'm a Christian, you know, and that's just my personal belief, I don't want, you know, a Buddhist pastor, you know, I don't mind my child talking to them, but I also don't want them to be exposed to a different religion without me being present. And so we need to make sure that there are some parameters in place for that as well.
I want to, my father was a Baptist preacher, and my grandfather was a Baptist preacher, so I'm a third generation, grew up in church my whole life, Sunday morning, Sunday night, and Wednesday night when I was growing up. So I am a big person of faith, but I do believe that everyone needs to be vetted, and along with that, we need to make sure that we have parental rights. If a parent does not want their child to go, then it needs to be stated, so it needs to be an opt-in policy with it. It's coming whether we want it or not, because the law has already been passed and signed into law that we can have chaplains in our schools, that it is allowed. So the vetting process for that is the same as any other volunteer. So as we're writing that policy, it's not been written yet for Polk County, but it will be written. So I guess it's, it's a train that's already bound for glory. It's, it's already going to happen in our county. How we, how we implement it is going to be the next steps to make sure that there are safe, safety there. I think that it needs to be even more so vetted than we do our teachers or other volunteers that come in, because we all know that, that, that is the first thing that I think people sometimes think about when they, they, they do, is making sure that that's, that they're protected in each way, so.
Not to sound like a broken record, because when you're the last one to answer the question, you typically get to repeat some things. But the, the big question is going to be, how do we implement it? There are several policies that are already in place that will, will fit right into this. One of them is, with, something that came down from Tallahassee last year, is that anytime a student is meeting with a club, or, or going to, to an event like that, that they have to have a waiver signed. It's very likely something that we could put on the waiver that comes out at the beginning of the school year, that says, you know, "Do, do you agree that your student can go and see the chaplain?" I do think that we need to make sure that when we do that, that we are, are indicating what, what faith is the chaplain of. I may be very comfortable with my son going and seeing a chaplain of, of one denomination, but I may be more hesitant for them to go see a chaplain of a different denomination, because as a parent, those are my responsibilities, is to have that conversation with my son. And it's not that I don't want him to be exposed to them, but I want to at least have a conversation with him first to say, "Hey, you know, what are you thinking? What are, let me answer some of these questions, and then we can, we can go and see, and if you want to explore, those are things that, that we can talk about." But that first is my responsibility as a parent. I think making sure, like we've said, that we vet them all, those Level 2 background checks that everyone is getting ready to, to have to require is going to be, be a big part of this. But this is, has already gone through Tallahassee, it is signed into law, and it's something that'll be coming up in the, the very near future as we're looking at our policies.
Thank you all. So this next question, Bernie Brandt, you will kick us off as our first respondent. So given the broad diversity of Polk County Schools, what are some ways we can assure the safety of students who have atypical challenges or behaviors, such as autism or, or any of the exceptionality, or whose gender doesn't conform to socially defined male or female gender roles? It's a very complex question.
So I think a lot of issues that you brought up in the question, I'm not going to repeat all of them. They require the, the touch of a mental health professional, and I would love to see a program in place that expands the availability of mental health professionals to every school, ultimately, for not just students, but also for staff. And it's important, because students going through challenges, whether it's a developmental disability, or a gender identity situation, or a, a poor grade, or a bad experience on a sports team, they need to have a resource that has, that is someone who is trained and has dedicated their life to understanding emotional and mental health. Teachers have a lot on their plate, administrators have a lot on their plate. They've dedicated their lives to working with children, but in a completely different capacity. So I'd love to see mental health professionals be more prominent and widespread throughout our school system.
Well, I'll tell you, for me, it's resources. Making sure we have the trained personnel in every school to handle those issues. And it even goes back to when we're drawing, and from my attendance on the, or my experience on the Attendance Boundary Committee, one of the first things we asked when we were considering redrawing a boundary line is, how many students of special needs does this affect? Because they do have certain, you know, maybe transportation needs they have, or staff and personnel, so I think first it's giving the students the resources they need, making sure that we honor that, and making sure that we are aware. And then finally, giving the parents an avenue to voice those concerns. I think being present within and having full transparency of what's going on speaks a lot, and if those parents are more involved and let us know of these issues, and we can address them head-on.
So I'll definitely agree with most of the stuff that Bernie and Travis has said. I think one thing as far as our inclusivity for our students, we need to make sure that they feel included. I think we are in a changing generation here with it. It is the reality, it's not something that's coming tomorrow, but it is something that is here. And so we need to make sure that not only are students that are of our LGBTQ plus community, but also our faculty and staff who are of that community feel welcomed. Too many times now, we are hearing that they are not feeling welcomed, they're not feeling like they're included in things because of their lifestyle. At the end of the day, our job is to educate kids, no matter their race, no matter their background, no matter how they identify, we still have to educate them. We still have to give them a quality education that when they leave high school, and this is the goal, that should be the goal for every 12th grader, that when they leave high school and Polk County Public Schools, that they are known and seen in our community as a model citizen for our community. They, they can go and do whatever they want to do in life, but they are seen as that model citizen in our community. And then as far as our ESE departments, we need to make sure that we look at it from a whole perspective, and making sure that if there are some things we need to kind of revamp and change for the times, and making sure that we are not only educating our students who are of that disability, but also the parents. Because let's be honest, you're not, there's no training guide on how to parent a child with disabilities.
Okay, I think that the question has two separate issues. So on unique abilities, I think our district can do much more to do that. I really think we need more, especially for our medically disabled students. We don't have a lot of resources for them. Those parents need resources. And we're not just talking about the, when, when you have a child with a unique ability or a special need, that, that doesn't go away. That's a whole family that is affected. The parents, the brothers, the sisters, that whole family is affected, so we need to be able to offer them more support and more options for them to go to classes. We've, for years, the state of Florida has tried to mainstream a lot of those students, and it doesn't work. We need to be able to provide them more resources. On the other side of that issue, we need to, we, you need to, we all need to understand that there is a Parents' Bill of Rights in the state of Florida, and there's the Parents' Rights in Education Bill. Those bills have been put in place, and there's a lot of things that you can and can't do in the school system now. And there are parents who are watchdogging too, that, to make sure that they, those, their rights are taken care of. So we can talk about more mental health counselors, but parents have to approve for you, for your student to be able to talk to them. We can't just, that, that is all part of that now. There's a whole process for that. So again, that goes to legislation and making sure our policies match up with the state legislation that's going to benefit our students. It's a trifecta.
Thank you. Again, parents are really the key to this. One of the things that Superintendent Hyde tells us a lot is, how do we make parents a partner in education instead of a passenger in their child's education? And that is the key. How do we make parents the partner? How do we make sure that we are helping them advocate for what is best for their student? How do we make sure that we are supporting their choices while also supporting their students? One of the big components to ESE specifically is IDEA was never fully funded, as it was intended to be. It's funded right now about 14%. It was originally supposed to be at 40%, and it has never been funded in that capacity. So what are we doing to make sure that every student has the resources that they need, that they have the access that they need? One of the things that, that we have been working on greatly this year, unfortunately, we've had a lot of tragedies in our schools. we've had a lot of tragedies in our school over the past year. More than any other year that I've been on the board, have we had student deaths, teacher deaths, crises this year. Um, making sure that our mental health counselors are out at each of those schools the day after it happens, but not only looking at the school that this student was currently at. Are they a sixth grader that it's August and they just came from elementary school? Who's at the elementary school where those teachers are? Making sure that we're supporting the teachers that are affected as well, because they're the ones that have to leave the classroom the next day. So making sure that, that the teachers understand the gravity of it, um, that they're able to support their students when a student says, hey, I need to go get some help, um, and making sure that they're giving them the, the flexibility to do that with the parent's permission.
Yeah, I think at the heart of the question, um, for me personally, when I set up, um, every one of our meetings, I say it's a, a privilege and we're humbled, uh, as a board to serve the most highly educated workforce in the nation. Um, as you know, we are, uh, one of the, uh, well, 27th largest school district in the United States. So the question just to me, uh, reveals to us the complexity of the classroom, right? And the agileness of our teachers is pretty impressive, uh, and, and the skills that they have to develop to service, uh, all of our students. And right, we can, we can talk about educational philosophy and so forth as it relates to differential learning and how a teacher can, um, really address all these individual concerns. I think in general, within this, uh, question for me personally, uh, I, I hesitated and I struggled with it, um, early on when, when we adopted it, but I'm seeing, uh, the growth of it, uh, is Hazel Health. So Hazel Health is a, a tele, um, health service that's offered to all of our students in all, uh, schools across Polk County. Um, I didn't like that we were spending so much money. The data usage was low initially, but we continue to see that climb. And basically, uh, at any time of the day, um, we can use tele services. And, and in essence, that was really to help on our chronic absenteeism and so forth. Um, but then on top of that, it's extended to home, right? So a parent, uh, can use tele health services for mental health counseling, uh, with their child. Uh, so for those things, I'm really excited that we've implemented and I've seen the growth of that.
All right. Thank you all. Um, and we do have some really important questions from the audience, both online and here in the room. Um, of course, in the interest of time, we will not be able to get to all of them, but I'm going to do my best to, um, combine questions where appropriate and hopefully get to some of the most critical issues that are, are on the minds of our audience. Um, so this next question starts with Travis Pease. How will you approach curriculum development to ensure it meets the needs of all students?
So I think the, one of the most important things when you're considering curriculum is what does the data say currently about where your students are at? I know that there's sometimes a negative connotation with testing, right? But at first, we have to know where our students are achieving and where they're failing at before we can address curriculum. And I think once we see the results and we look at them in real time, then we go back and look at what's the best curriculum today for those students, um, considering all avenues. I think that we've got some of those things too complicated. So I will tell you, as a parent of a student, when my daughter was in fourth grade and me having graduate level education, she comes home and I can't understand her math. Um, to me, that's a big issue, right? Um, I don't understand why she had to explain the problem with a thesis to be able to get a correct answer. So I think let's, let's get, let's analyze that and make sure that we're getting the best educational outcomes for each individual level.
And so I'll answer that by saying, I, I definitely agree with what, uh, Travis is saying about that. There is definitely some getting back to the basics that need to be done as far as our education system. Um, if you look at just, and this isn't a long time ago, I graduated high school in 2017. And if you look at just when I went to school versus now, our education system has totally changed in the way we educate our students. I grew up in a time where, you know, teachers taught and they were able to have that flexibility in teaching and making sure that our students know what was going on. And now we're to a point, as my mother likes to call it, teaching to a test. Um, I agree that we do need testing to know where our students are, but don't mandate our teachers that they can't have any flexibility. Let's be honest, every teacher does not teach the same way. Every child does not learn the same way. If you put a presentation in front of me and think I'm going to sit there for an hour and a half, you better know I'm going to fall asleep. I'm just, I'm just going to tell you like that because I am a hands-on learner. I need to see it happening before me. And so there is some, some transformational change that we need to do. And first, how we are educating our students to make sure that we are getting the best outcome and the best ROI.
So I would say, can, can we park here for a while on this one? Curriculum is so important, but there is no one size fits all in curriculum. There isn't. We're never going to find the perfect curriculum. We're not. Because it doesn't fit the student and it doesn't fit the teacher. And that's one of the reasons I'm a big proponent of choice. Because some, because choice can help different students who learn different ways go to the school with the teacher that's going to fit for them. All right? But it's, we're trying to put, sometimes we're trying to put square pegs and round holes. All right? Or we want a teacher to do a lesson plan and have to teach it three different ways because there's three different learning styles. That's really, really hard to do for every lesson. So I think that there, we're never going to find the perfect curriculum for a teacher, a perfect curriculum for all students. So we, so I think parents need to have that choice to realize, this way isn't working, let me try something else. Montessori schools, we have great Montessori charter schools. We have Robert's Academy. We have all these options for other, for other ways of learning. So we need to make sure that when we're talking curriculum, we're not trying to force a teacher into what they don't, what their learning style, their teaching style, and not forcing the student into a learning style, that it doesn't work for them.
Thank you. There is no silver bullet for curriculum, but I do think that there are opportunities to differentiate curriculum. Um, one of the programs that I'm really excited about, I talked a little bit about earlier, is 3DE. So that takes every class that you have and we're focusing it on one topic. So the UPS challenge, for example, they were challenged with, UPS is doing a special Christmas program, they're hiring additional employees there, that are seasonal employees. How can they recruit these employees? They, in their math class, talked about some of the salaries, some of the benefits, how that worked into a benefits package. They were able to do that in math. They, in their English class, talked about the literature that was actually written in the ads that they created. Um, in their social studies class, they looked at the history of UPS and the history of, of different organizations like UPS, that they were able to, in their curriculum, build in one topic and see how it works in the real world, which is so important. And we have so lost sight of what is, how are we going to use this in the real world? I had a teacher one time tell me, you know, why do you need to know geometry? Well, if you get, if somebody asks you a, a question in the elevator and they're going to shoot you or you're going to have to answer the question, will you be able to answer it? It's like, that's not a good reason. That is, why do I need to know geometry? No, in our career academies, there is a, the hospitality tour that we did in, for their career academy in Nashville, they actually, in their geometry class, have students have to set up a diagram for an event setup. They have to put so many round tables, so many rectangle, rectangle tables. That is how geometry is used in real life. And those are the important things that we need to make sure are included in our curriculum.
So I'm going to think about it from the lower levels. Um, one analogy that Superintendent, uh, gives and brings to us as it relates to interventions, uh, would be, it's, it's almost like Fred's Market. You know, you go to Fred's Market and you just have all these options. And it's like this big smorgasbord and that's, and that's where we were at. Uh, and I think that our district, uh, has done a really good job of, of bringing to the classroom research-based, uh, intervention. So, and you know, when you, when you see, uh, Wayne Green, you see Joe McNaughton at the district and just the implementation of these interventions is pretty exciting. And then for me, when I'm visiting District One schools and I'm engaging with a principal and she's like, come here, come here, have you seen this? Have you seen the science of reading? Have you seen corrective reading? This is how this is. This is how we're doing it. Uh, so all this small group instruction around, uh, some of the corrective reading is pretty exciting for me, um, as I visit with our schools. Uh, but then I'm, you know, thinking about it from pipelines. I think it's extremely important as a parent, uh, if I choose to, to place my child in a school that has something unique, for example, Southwest Elementary, uh, one of our very first elementary schools that has a digital media, um, academy. So can we pipeline that? So if a student's really gravitating to storytelling and visual language, will they have that option when they, um, move to Southwest Middle? And then when they go from Southwest Middle to George Jenkins? Um, so that's really important to me. I think, um, we are underneath this $15 million competitive grant that we got, uh, to really bring some of our accelerated initiatives, so we get some pipelines, uh, for our accelerated programs across the county.
About the last person to go every question, so. In addition to what, big issue with curriculum is that our teachers who are dedicated, trained professionals in their craft have been hamstrung by people at the Tallahassee level with not giving them the resources they need and the freedom to choose what materials are going to work best for not only their teaching style, but for the community and the group of students that they're teaching. Um, this goes back to an earlier question. I would like to see more lobbying done to Tallahassee to explain them why their decisions to remove textbooks, remove other curriculum options are hurting the students of every school district. And in 10, 15, 20 years, when those students are, are bankers, are, are police officers, are firefighters, are doctors, those systems will show a drastic difference than how they are now because Tallahassee keeps chipping away at the materials available to our teachers.
All right. I am hoping we can squeeze in two more questions before, uh, time is up for this evening. So this next one, we will begin with Marcus Wright. Um, and the question is, what will you do to further assist and support black and brown students as well as their families from our communities?
Oh, that's a good question. That's a very good question. I know, that's, that's a funny, that's a funny one.
Thank someone in this room for that.
That's a funny one. Uh, listen, I, I think that we have to first realize that, um, we as a culture of people, we are totally different. Um, there are some things that, most of the time, you know, we're seen as aggressive and sometimes we're seen as, you know, talking back. And that's not always the case. And I used to advocate for this when I was on school campuses. Um, that's not the child talking back. That's how we express ourselves. And so we are a different culture of people. We, we, we know that. And then we're trying to get others to realize that, that it ain't always us fighting back. Um, but we also realize that we got a high suspension rate, um, because of that, because we're not understood in our culture, because we're not understood in how we communicate and how our families communicate. And so we need to make sure that, um, if we are going to educate all kids, uh, sometimes, you know, when we're having our principal meetings in the summer and our assistant principal meetings and our teacher meetings, we're going to have to do some culture training to understand what it takes to educate. It's, it's, there's a difference in just educating kids because you're educating kids of different cultures and backgrounds.
I'd also like to point out that our population is very diverse. 30% of our population is black, 30% is Hispanic. And I've said this more than once, that we don't have that represent, um, those on our school board. We don't, up here running, we don't. Um, that is a problem, especially since our Hispanic community hasn't, I don't think anyone's been on the school board in years or ever that represents that. Um, so this is something that is some, we need to be addressing more, um, in our school, that this is something that we need to talk about more. I liked what he said earlier. I've, I've actually advocated for this, having smaller groups and where parents can actually come to a meeting like this, um, instead of school board meetings all the way in Bartow, having smaller communities come together and say, this is what our community needs. I think that would help with it. But I think it is something that we need to start addressing more in the county.
Thank you. So a, a big component is partnerships and making sure that, that we're, we're reaching those families where they are. Um, I think a great example of this is in the Florence Villa neighborhood in Winter Haven. Um, so we have the PEP Tutoring Center, which is a community center that is in Florence Villa neighborhood. Um, if you look at that neighborhood, there are seven blocks zoned to seven different elementary schools. Let me say that again. Seven blocks zoned to seven different elementary schools. They are going as far as 20 minutes away by car, not when you're stopping on a bus, to their elementary school one way. How can their parents be involved? That, that's going to be 45 minutes round trip just to go and, and volunteer in the classroom or just to go and have lunch with your student. How do they become involved? Making sure as, as we're doing our rezoning, that our, our students are going to school as close of, as close to home as possible, if that's what they opt to do, they should have that option. They should not be prevented from going to the school across the street from them. But we also have to work with the community to make sure that there are opportunities in their communities for us to come and help with tutoring, for us to, to make sure that the parents are able to be involved at that level, because we do need partners in education. We need partners, whether it's the local churches, whether it's local community groups that want to come and be involved, going into the communities, not expecting the communities to come to us. You know, Superintendent Hyde has done, since he's come here at least once, often twice a year, a speaking tour, um, to go around and answer any questions, to, to really have the community come in, um, because we do need better representation. One of the things we've worked on, and that's my time.
Uh, you know, so for me, again, my, uh, number one point is student success, right? So in, in, in that idea of workforce readiness and college readiness, so for me, I think it's extremely important that we're looking at all subgroups. So, um, and if, if you did a public information request and, you know, you got access to that spreadsheet that we're using as our baseline data, you will see that pretty much in every foundation, you'll see subgroups, right? And you'll see what that baseline data is for every subgroup. So when, basically, um, next Wednesday, and I'll be on the edge of my seat, uh, when the superintendent gives us, uh, the results from the State Board of Education, that, uh, meeting that's taking place next Wednesday, we will know, uh, our progress. So when we start to analyze that data, and, I mean, there's a lot of excitement in, in the district right now with that data. Um, so, uh, we will, we'll have a chance to look at every individual subgroup by foundation. That's extremely important. So then we know, you know, we're looking at the data and we want to respond to that data. Uh, the other one secondary for me, uh, has always been the equity reports. We get equity reports every year. Um, and for me, I'm, I'm looking at data, right? So, um, I'm looking at the success of AP for all of our different subgroups and I want to know. Uh, the other areas are staff, right? I see, I see the statistics, um, of what the percentage of staff would be of color. And typically, I bring that forward when those equity, equity reports come forward.
To go back to my answer from the question before, I think it's incredibly important that we allow teachers to determine the best method for teaching the students in their classroom. I'd love to see a shift in focus to allow teachers to say, I'm teaching in an area that's predominantly XYZ community, I know these students, they learn best this way, and then come to the board, come to the district, come to Tallahassee and be able to get materials they need to reach those students best. I'd love to see us do more recruiting at HBCUs. I'd love to see more programs involving mentorship in communities. And I'd love to see a focus on keeping students in the schools that are in their backyard. And I think if we do all those things, we'll see a dramatic shift.
So for me, and, and it's, it's been said already, I think one of the most important things that we can do is have diversity in staff. Putting our schools with a diverse population of teachers and staff, that is our front line. But I think, you know, what's more important than that is being present and being connected to the community. Uh, immerse yourself in that community and what their needs are. So, um, for me, um, it was growing up, um, every summer on the South Side of Chicago, wondering how, of gang violence, right? But I would have known that if I wasn't immersed in that community. So we have to have boots on the ground in that community, talking to not only the community leaders, but those, head on and making sure the voices are heard by giving parents access to those schools and to those, um, educational leaders and making sure their voices are heard.
Thank you all. Um, there are about 20 other questions in this stack that I would like to ask, but, um, I don't know if anyone packed a dinner, but I, I know I did not, um, or, or a sleeping bag for that matter. Um, so what we are going to do is we are going to wrap up the forum by asking each candidate to give us a one-minute closing statement. So we will begin, um, with Rebecca Hicks.
Well, first of all, I want to tell you, thank you all for coming. It means, this is a full room and it really means that you care about our education here in Polk County. And we really appreciate having us, everyone who invited us. I, I personally appreciate that. And the questions, you guys didn't hold any punches on the questions and I appreciate that also because that means that you're thinking about what our county, and you make that also, because that means that you're thinking about what our county, and you make us think about what our county and what our community really needs. And those are the things we need to be talking about. Um, I, I do wanna point out that some of the, the, when they were talking about legislative advocacy, and when, um, some people were talking about, um, the boards they're on and their things, that's literally what school board members get paid for. They get paid $40,000 a year to be involved in the community. So that is what they should be doing. Um, that's part of the job. And I would like to just say that this, this here is what I wanted to do my whole life, is make sure that we're making a difference in our community, making sure we're making a difference with our students.
Thank you. So I was talking to someone earlier today, and they're like, "You're still really excited about this." And that's true. I am still really excited about this, just as excited as I, as I was in 2016. Um, it is important work. We've made so much progress in the past eight years, and there's, I still feel like there's a little bit more work left to do. Um, that's why I decided to run again, because I have a 10-month-old now, um, and he's going to kindergarten before we know it, and I've got more work to do. For he and for another 120,000 students that need the best education system right here in Polk County.
So education is a gateway to hope. And, um, for me, it was. It was that pillar of hope, and I still believe that wholeheartedly, and I, I see the progression. So we went from three A schools, and we've tripled that to nine. Uh, we've doubled the amount of B schools. We have no failing schools in Polk County right now. And looking at that preliminary data, um, we were not gonna have any more as well. So, yes, thank you. Uh, so, again, I'm humbled, uh, to serve the strongest and greatest, um, you know, teachers, and I'm humbled, uh, for that opportunity, and would love to have your vote August 20th. Uh, again, William Allen.
I wanna close just by saying thank you. Um, thank you to our hosts, thank you to my fellow candidates, and thank you to all of you for taking the time to come out, get involved, listen to what we have to say, ask questions. Um, thank you to our security staff, the security and Lakeland Police out there in the lobby keeping us safe. And I'm Bernie Brandt, I'm running for District One, and I'd love to talk to you. I'll stay tonight as long as you want, and feel free to visit any of our tables in the back and get our materials.
I appreciate each one of you coming here tonight. Um, it is very important to get involved. Um, if you, if you sit on your hands and don't say anything, please don't think anything's gonna change, right? So be active in your community. For me, it's about equal opportunity and access for all students. Really to sum it up to where it hits home for me is, my daughter wants to go to Harrison High School when she gets out of eighth grade. We live on the east side of Haynes City. She would have to get on a bus at 4:30 in the morning to go to Harrison. So when I say equal access, I wanna make sure we have programs for all students across the board in all areas of the county to make sure we are best feeding the needs of the students.
That is an early bus. I used to, I, we don't just want to see you in meetings like this. We need you to see, show up to school board meetings. We need you to be on SAC committees at the local schools. We need your involvement as a community to make our education system better. There's three things I tell everybody in leaving that I would need from them. The first thing is your time. Uh, get involved, volunteer with the campaign. Uh, this is a whole county-wide campaign. All of our seats are county-wide, which means we've got to hit all 17 municipalities in a small amount of time. So get involved, volunteer, um, the campaign. Uh, that's just the reality of it. So feel free to donate, go back to the table, we, August 20th, help me make the right choice for all and vote Marcus Wright Jr. for Polk County School Board.
Yes. Now is the time for applause for all of our candidates.
I didn't clap for you. I didn't clap for me either.
So, I do wanna thank you all for participating in such a lively, uh, discussion, um, and appreciate you following the guidelines that were laid out. And thank you all in the audience for being here and for caring. I'm going to turn this over to our emcee for just a couple of closing statements, so hang tight.
Yeah, thanks very much. I said earlier I was the secretary of the League of Women Voters. I also taught for 22 years in Polk County, and it's really nice to hear six people that are dedicated to what we are trying to do. I wanna remind you that August 20th, though it's a primary, is when you will vote for these candidates. That if you are not registered as a Republican, or if you're registered in the Green Party, as I am, you still vote on August 20th. Or you can vote by mail early, or you can vote early. So, what you heard tonight, make sure it motivates you to get to the polls. We want a couple of thank yous, and then we would like to close with one last prayer, being since that we've been given this wonderful opportunity by this church. But thank you very much to the candidates for participating. Thank you, Dr. Persson, for moderating. League of Women Voters, NAACP, Polk County Voters League, and Alpha Kappa Alpha Omicron Kappa Omega Chapter. Thank you very much. And, hopefully you will also join us on July 30th at The Well, where there will be another forum for a county commission and property appraiser. But if I could have us just settle for a moment, let me please bring up Pastor Willie Mincy for a closing prayer.
Yes, we need the chaplain. Let's pray. Kind Father, we thank you for the gift of this wonderful day. Thank you for the wonderful privilege that you've given to us, to be gathered in this place for this wonderful occasion, to hear from these candidates that are running for school board in Polk County. God, we thank you for the knowledge that was shared tonight, and we ask, oh God, that you would protect each one of these men and women, and I ask that you would give us the right people. That would be a blessing in our school district. For Lord, we need you, our children need you. And we just ask that you would protect us now as we prepare to leave this place, as you're traveling mercies over the highways. Take us safely home and bless us, oh God, and help us to prepare ourselves for August 20th to go and vote. Be with us now, and we will give you glory, we will give you honor, we will give you praise. And we say thank you for all things. In the wonderful name of our Lord Jesus Christ, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you for praying.
Thank you all.
We have to make, make sure that they ain't falling asleep yet.
This is Barry Friedman with Lakeland Now. Thank you for joining us tonight. We'll be back on July 30th with a forum with the candidates for a county commission and property appraiser.